All right, we're going to get started. This is our staff meeting of the Hamilton County Commissioners, March 25th, 2025. We have two agenda items today. Before we get started, though, we're going to introduce ourselves on the day.
Kristi Rachel, Assistant Clerk.
Leslie Hervey, Clerk to the Board.
Stephanie Summerall, Dumas Commissioner.
Hamilton County Commissioner, Alicia Reese.
Jeff Ludo, County Administrator.
Patrick Dressing, Assistant Prosecuting Attorney.
I'm Commissioner Denise Treehouse. So, our first agenda item is a strategic plan update from Ready. Kim Lotterback is here to present all things Ready. So, thank you for being here.
Excellent, thank you for inviting me. Good to see all of you. Almost opening day, so we're looking forward to some good weather. Alicia Reese, I love that color. Makes me think of spring. Excellent, all right, guys, I'm going to attempt to be in control of the presentation. So, I wanted to give you an overview. You are all very familiar with the work that we do at Ready, but we have entered into a new three-year strategic plan. So, I wanted to take some time to update you on that plan. But before we do, always just like to remind everyone watching who we are and what we do. Am I just... There we go. Or not. Sorry, guys. You have to be smarter than the clicker. Because it was upside down. There you go. She's smarter than the clicker. So, just as a reminder, Ready Cincinnati stands for the Regional Economic Development Initiative. Our sole focus is to create new jobs and bring capital investment into our 15-county, three-state region. And we do that by uniting our region to compete globally. We like to say we are nowhere near the only or the primary point in the economic development industry, but we like to be that first point of contact to make it more easy for our clients to navigate our economic development ecosystem. And I would like to say that this is the team. We do this every day. We are a small but mighty team of 23, working hard to make sure that we meet the needs of the entire region. Our executive committee, just for a reminder, Commission President Denise Treehouse represents the Hamilton County Commissioners on Executive Committee. You can see the list of who's who up there made up of our largest investors, as well as our large business and industry leaders who help us navigate the economic development ecosystem. Before every presentation, I'd like to thank you again for your investment. You all are a key investor for us. We consider the county to be a founding-level investor. You can see the partners on the screen that make those same-level investments. As a reminder, we are a leveraged funding system. So, both the city of Cincinnati and Hamilton County match each other's investment, which is required to draw down our Jobs Ohio funding. They represent about a third to 40% of our budget on any given year. And that is required, again, to have both public and private investors that support the work we do here in the region. Also, as a reminder, we are one of now seven Jobs Ohio Network Partners. We have been in the system since 2014. You can see from Jobs Ohio's chart up there, they were established in 2011, started working in 2013 with the liquor franchise. And just a few weeks ago, did receive a 15-year liquor extension, taking that liquor extension out until 2035, I believe, by the time it all expires. I don't know about you all, I don't think I'll be doing this job in 2035, but I'm glad to know we have the resources to do it. And then, just as a reminder of where Jobs Ohio ranks from a statewide performance and leading into that liquor extension really has been a key partner in the economic development work that we have done, moving the state's reputation, ability to attract large and transformational projects through that stable funding source. So, continue to be a phenomenal partner. And as I travel across the country, certainly, and even globally, Jobs Ohio is certainly the envy of my peers across the country in having that ability to leverage that stable funding system. So, we always say I only get to talk about the amazing things that we do. It's the power of the partnership and the network behind us. Again, as a reminder, we are, we believe, the only regional economic development group that serves a portion of three states. There are a handful that serve a portion of two states, but we do think we are the only one that serve three. So, you can see on that map, three counties in Indiana, seven counties in Kentucky, and five counties in southwest Ohio that make up our MSA. We work to really promote that entire area globally, drawing eyeballs into the region, and then working with our local partners on the ground when we work within the specific counties to secure projects. This is a snapshot of our entire region by the numbers, and then Hamilton County called out below, just as a reminder of the strength of our global economy. We rank about 30th in terms of our size of our MSA, both in GRP and in population. But we have for the past 20 years, but in the top 10 for job creation and economic development projects. So, we always say, you know, the cliche, we always bat out of our league, we're hitting above our weight class, but these numbers really show you that we do that based on where we stand. And part of that advantage and why I think we are so successful is that we are, as you all know, such a diverse industry ecosystem. We have a climate that really helps us transition through tough times because we have such a diversity of industry. We don't have all of our eggs in the proverbial one basket. And I'd just like to call out, I think, one of our huge strengths that is really underappreciated, if you will, is the international flavor of our region. We have over 450 foreign-owned firms. About 20% of those are here in Hamilton County, making us one of the most globally diverse and welcoming areas of the country as well. Again, just some notable regional accolades. Again, as we sort of punch above our weight class, what are the things that are drawing eyeballs to the region? You know, certainly, you see accolades like Forbes calling us the number-one city for young professionals to live, our children's hospital, the airport, our ability for our ecosystem, lots of things here that give us the ability to really attract and help companies grow here. So, the question is always, is it working? This is just a reminder, we turned 11 years old actually this month. And in those 11 years, Ready has assisted the region in winning close to 800 projects, bringing in over 68,000 new jobs to the area and driving over $12 billion in capital investment. It's a pretty significant accomplishment in 11 years of work and really helps anchor those companies to this region. And what the beauty of being a partner within the Ready ecosystem is as those companies anchor here, then we work with our surrounding communities and counties to ensure that those companies have a home and we're frequently visiting them through business retention and expansion visits and making sure that they're here to stay and thrive. We can talk a little bit about that. So, as we look at 11 years, what did 2024 bring for us? You know, 2024 was, you know, a little bit of a challenging year. It was, you can imagine, lots of uncertainty in the midst of national elections, inflation challenges. It still was a good year for the region. It was not our best year, but bringing over 4,000 jobs to the region as a whole, anchoring, again, about over $1 billion in capital investment. Interesting for us that about 20% of our wins in 2024 across the region were from foreign-owned firms, so that FDI piece continues to be a strong portion of our wins, which is fantastic. If you drill down again, remember, the region represents the work that we do across all 15 counties and three states. When we look specifically at southwest Ohio, as you all know, that is the contract work that we do with Jobs Ohio. The snapshot of our wins remains really strong. And in fact, I would call out that the regional or the average payroll of the jobs in southwest Ohio last year, that Ready touch was almost $84,000 a job. It's about 20% higher than what the national average was. So, we were working with some really high-quality projects that were coming through the pipeline, on par with about 20... Well, actually, we were hired about 25% of our wins through foreign direct investment. And then notable Hamilton County wins. What you're seeing on the screen is a five-year snapshot of the work that we've done together, bringing in over 8,000 jobs into the county, again, over $1 billion in new payroll. If I dive down into 2024 metrics, we had 25 of our projects were within Hamilton County, bringing almost 1,000 jobs, which if you think about, we did about 2,400 across the entire southwest Ohio region. That's a really nice share in Hamilton County. Again, about $81,000 average wage. You can see the large company names on the screen that we work for. What I like about this is we look at diversity and size and industry and ownership. It's a really nice look of the industry here in Hamilton County. So, I think important. Most people think we work only with large companies. That is 100% not true. We do a lot of work with small business, and I'll talk about that as we make our way through the presentation. Before I move on to the strategy, do you all have any questions for me? So, let's talk about the new strategy. Last year, we engaged our economic development and community partners, industry leaders, and throughout the ecosystem on a strategic planning process to ensure that our approach reflected the needs and opportunities of our community. And our goal was to build a highly inclusive, globally competitive, and vibrant economy. We came off the heels of a five-year strategy that guided us through and post-COVID. So, we thought three years felt like the right amount of time to look at a new strategy, seeing how quickly industry trends, technology is changing. So, we wanted to make sure that we had a really button-down process that would guide us over the next three years. We came up with three bold goals that are guiding us, thereby, now we are now referring to this as our three-by-three strategy when you hear us talk about it. And we believe that this strategy will help guide more specific opportunities to bring growth for the entire region. As we dive into that strategy, our first goal, booming business, this is really the largest driver and the most, I would say, day-to-day type of work that you would expect from Ready Cincinnati. We're doubling down on our efforts to position the Cincinnati region as, again, one of the most diverse, inclusive, and vibrant economies. And we're doing that through targeted attraction, retention, and expansion efforts. Most notably, we have added a business development committee to the work that we do, and you do have representation on that committee with the form of Alloy. We're working four meetings a year. Andrea Enders is leading that effort. She's here with me today to make sure that we're finding more unique and specific ways to hyper-target attraction. Generating that pipeline of leads and for the region is the fundamental role of what we do at Ready. And of course, achieving this goal would be almost impossible if we weren't also focused on priority site and talent development. Again, that site development is highlighted by the work and the partnership that we have with the port, as well as other organizations throughout the MSA, but they are really the leader in our site development work. As we move on to our second goal, this would be our unified global brand. This is really our attempt to amplify the region's reputation as a globally competitive destination for businesses and talent. So, while we have partners such as the CBBs and through the Chamber who work on more of the visitor or the individual ecosystem, we are working to amplify that region against corporate decision-maker, site-location consultants, and business leaders. Really telling that story and communicating the region's economic development message is vital to helping us drive those leads and that messaging through. And then our last goal is focusing on our prioritizing engagement and inclusive growth. This is discussions with partners and industry leaders throughout our strategic planning process. Two key themes emerged. It was the need for a deeper focus, which I'll touch on here momentarily, as well as stronger alignment and collaboration. So, we're prioritizing our partnerships in this ecosystem to make sure that we are collaborating and that the economic growth and benefits are beneficial for all of us. And again, this really, all of this layers up to supporting our goal of becoming that really diverse, vibrant, and inclusive ecosystem. So, as I talk about those three bold goals, we think about the core industries and the focus, the message of deeper focus that we heard across our strategic stakeholders. We have four core industries seen up on the screen. These are the industries that I have talked about for 10 years now. That includes advanced manufacturing, business and professional services, life sciences, and technology. We will continue to focus on these core industries for our joint business retention and expansion meetings and our project management. You can see below that Hamilton County's share of those same industries that across the entire region. So really important industry drivers for all of that. Again, these will continue to be a core focus of our existing work. However, as we zoom in on our attraction work, and what really came to light through the strategic planning process, was our need to really prioritize our marketing and attraction efforts so that we weren't spreading too thin across a variety of industries, but we were going deep on the industries where we felt we had a right to win. Layering these industry targets also with geographical areas to get us a really hyper-focused list. So you're going to see more of our proactive approach on life sciences, aerospace and aviation, food flavor and beverage, and chemicals and materials. These have been areas where we have won over the several past few years, and we continue to see an outsized right to win. So we think they make sense from a recruitment standpoint. We are also looking across these verticals, not just at emerging technologies, but at relocation or growth of R&amp;D centers, corporate headquarter, manufacturing, and supply chain opportunities. I could spend a lot of time on this slide because this is where the nerd in me comes out and the work that we get to do, but I will leave it here. Suffice it to say that there will be a QR code that you can scan that will take you to our full strategy if you're interested in diving deeper into any of these sectors or any of the geographic strategies and targets. Lastly, I'll just leave you with our 2025 conference and attraction agenda. My team spends a lot of time logging miles globally as well as domestically to get in front of the right decision-makers for companies who are looking to grow or change. What you're seeing here, again, is a little bit of an eye chart. The conferences in bold are where we plan to be in 2025. The remainder, our industry shows our targets that we are following, that we might do some digital marketing at, or that we're looking at for 2026. For instance, the Paris Air Show is a target in 2025. You'll see halfway down that list, Farmborough, that's a 2026 show. So that's the distinction there. I will point out that oftentimes, our investors travel with us to these shows. And in fact, just two weeks ago, I was on our first international trip of the year in France, and I had two representatives from Alloy with me on that trip. So we had a week-long opportunity in the air focusing again on aerospace, aviation, food flavoring, beverages, and life sciences. I'll tell you, it was an interesting trip. I've been doing business in France for 10 years, and while we had some great meetings and two really strong prospects, it was a little bit of a cooler reception than what we've had in the past, I think highlighting the uncertainty that is surrounding our environment, both for jobs and politics currently. Okay, so that is our focus for 2025 through 2027. And then the other question we often get is, you know, how do you work with the Ready team, or what is the right time to engage with the Ready team? And really, I would say that successful communities know, you know, your assets. I'm going to click through this, I don't like these slides who do it this way. Okay, so really, as we always say, economic development is a team sport, and it requires all of us to engage and be present together. Our role is to represent Cincinnati to the world and to bring leads to the region, and then allow the region to help secure those wins. Our local governments, our utilities, our educational institutes, our investors, there is a role for everyone to play in this work. Having a vision for the county or for your community is critical. As the largest county in the urban center of the region, a vibrant Hamilton County is essential for us to be successful. As you know, each of your communities is unique, and the ability to sell that variability of lifestyle, whether it's true urban living to more of a rural presence, makes our jobs that much easier to do. We do believe that every community should have a robust business retention and expansion program, and I would say you certainly do at the county level. We partner with Alloy and the majority of your individual communities in Hamilton County. A vast majority of the business retention and expansion visits we do take place within the county. Those are a source of leads for us, also helps us get in front of any potential challenges or issues. Great example would be when we were working with the airport on the attraction of the British Airways flight. We were able to have really direct conversation through these business meetings on the need for direct service to London, helps make that business case. Obviously, site development remains a key portion of our need. You've heard me say for probably 10 years that we don't have enough sites. That hasn't changed. We still don't have enough sites. We continue to talk about it, but this is where our partnership with the port has been great. And I would thank you and call out Jivodon is a fantastic example of the way that we all worked together to secure a win, right? It was the foresight that you all had, the capital and the patience. So thank you for your investment, both in the port and into us, to allow us to provide the product to do the work that we do. And then lastly, I would just say we need to know what our communities are eligible for, whether it's a Jobs Ohio program, a State of Ohio program, even federal government programs. There are so many programs and opportunities out there. I just want to highlight that Jobs Ohio Business, that small business grant, again, is a, is a, an asset that's out there that people, I think, are still underutilized. So I will talk about that here in a moment. And again, just to highlight, typically, Ready Cincinnati through Jobs Ohio works in primary industry sectors. So we do not typically work with retail or service companies. Those are projects that really get assistance through Hamilton County offices, whether it's Alloy, it's small business development. So top of head, if you're working with Ready, we always say, are you adding 10 or more jobs? Are you adding $1 million in capital investment? And are you doing that over a three- to five-year period? Those 10 jobs need at least $600,000 in payroll. If the answer to those questions are yes, they are fit for our traditional programs. Now, again, I keep saying small business, I'm going to tease that one out for you one more time, and we'll go to that slide. Most small businesses are not necessarily eligible for these traditional incentive programs. So this is where the bulk of our work was done, through the majority of our work. I also want to point out, though, we work with so many companies that don't ever leverage incentives, right? We're helping connect them to talent, to the resources for financing or for land development. So don't think of us solely as the incentive portion of the, of the work. We are here to remove barriers and help growth. So so many of our metrics and our projects come outside of the incentive process. But this is a good, at least, thought process of this is a right time to engage Ready. I've talked about the Small Business Grant, formerly known before as the Jobs Ohio Inclusion Grant. This is a project that has really been, a program has been vital for us. This was unveiled, really, in the midst of COVID in 2020. When we continue to hear there were so many small businesses that could not access the Jobs Ohio Network or Support System for Growth, and we know a core of so much of that growth comes from small businesses. So we're looking at companies here who are either in a distressed ZIP code or have underrepresented ownership. And by underrepresented ownership, we're talking about minorities, women's, veterans, people with disabilities. Again, still need to be in the Jobs Ohio priority sector. Again, not, not necessarily focused at retail. Now, there are some exceptions, but very few on the retail side. Here, we're talking about 10% job growth. Well, in some companies, that could literally be one job qualifies you for this program. It is having $100,000 or more in revenue, and it's the capacity to at least create some type of a new job. The recipients typically come in $50,000-plus grants, and these grants are more flexible, allowing you to invest in machinery and equipment, building costs, software training, some types of things that some, don't always qualify for the traditional incentive. I will tell you that Hamilton County has been our, by far, the leading success of this program. All time, we've helped 69 small businesses bring in 450 new jobs, creating nearly $30 million in new payroll. And I will tell you, of those programs, 80% qualified on the underrepresented ownership portion of it, and 20% through ZIP codes. So we're really getting to the businesses that we were intending to help with this program, and I would encourage you to continue to share this program out with any of your constituents because it is an opportunity to really make a difference. Examples of successes in Hamilton County include Journey Steel, Triversity, Foodies Vegan, and Skin by Brownlee, just as examples of projects that we've worked with. So that all leads me with the, the question, how can you all help? Thank you all do a phenomenal job. First of all, thank you for trusting us with your investment and being a true partner towards us. Our work with, across really, all of your organizations is fantastic. I would call your attention to the, you know, raise awareness bucket. That's really what we're trying to do, is draw as many global eyebrow, eyeballs as we can on the Cincinnati region, on Hamilton County. Our success is your success, and so the more that we can get the message out there, the better. I will leave you with our QR code, and happy to take any questions.
All right, yeah. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
You squeezed a lot in there.
Would you expect any less from me?
And you talk fast. It's like, oh, my, that's just a lot of information. So and just as a reminder for those that might not be familiar with the county's strategy related to economic development, from my vantage point, we have three different arms of economic development. Alloy is one, Ready is one, and the port is one. And so these teams all, and I'm glad you mentioned Alloy, we, we all work in partnership so that those entities are talking to one another, and we have goals related to each of those. So I appreciate you mentioning both the port and alloy. I have got a couple of questions. I've got actually more than a couple of questions, but I'm going to just ask a couple to begin with, I know. Try not to overdo and, and kick it around and then go back. So I'm looking at the slide where you talk about foreign firms and the nature of those investments here, and how that, it sounds like it's an increasing market for Hamilton County and for the region. So of the 95 foreign firms that are on your chart, can you help us better understand which countries are represented there? And which industries are represented there?
I can certainly provide a more detailed breakdown. Always going top of mind is never the best way to do it. But I can tell you, our largest foreign direct investment by region is Japan, followed closely by, by Europe and that. And by Europe, we lead with Germany, then it is UK and France, and then it becomes the countries after that. It tended to be automotive, but we're seeing increased investment in aerospace and in the chemicals, materials, and in food flavor and beverage.
Okay, thank you for that. Yeah, because I look at the amount of travel and it's, it's significant, but it's important as you, you know, lure these, lure, probably is not the right, entice these businesses to come here to our region. Couple other things that you mentioned, I just was wondering if you could give us a dig down just a little bit more related to some of the things that attract businesses to this region. Those things, and to this region, any region really, location, talent, housing, transportation, some of the nuts and bolts of why a business might either expand or relocate to this area. And so can you just generally, you know, we have, as a commission, have worked really hard on the housing piece to try to provide all different types of housing in our community. I know other cities, counties throughout the state are doing the same. You know, talent is always a challenge. I think that's probably our biggest challenge right now, transportation with the sorta levy. We've started to address some of those concerns. And so what is your take on how we are doing as a region? And do any of these kind of nuts and bolts incentives for businesses to come here, are, is there room for improvement perhaps on any of the fronts?
Yeah, I would tell you that the housing conversation has been extraordinary, the uptick in requests from Ready to provide information on housing, right? That's something that we have seen just really change and increase in our RFI response. It's an interesting topic for us because it's, you know, a something that we are not in, but we have to at least know enough to make sure we're providing the right answers. I would say that housing and talent have become really important conversation drivers. From a talent perspective, I don't know that anyone has any advantage, right? Talent shortage is global, and so there's not that many regions that are going to distinguish themselves on availability of talent. I will say, however, because we have such a diverse economy, we can fill almost any job need. So that does give us a leg up, right? That diversity of economy, we pretty much have the ability to pull talent in almost any sector, which is different than some of our other competitors who are focused on one specific region. As I think about things that might hold us back, you know, it continues to be for us, it's the availability of sites. You know, I get asked, and it's an interesting conversation, given the current state of affairs, you know, the Intel project, we could not compete for the Intel project. And we can talk all day long about what's happening with Intel, but you think about the last large mega project win was Androl, which is a defense technology company that's going up in the Rickerbocker area outside of Columbus. It's going to be the equivalent of like 50 football fields under one roof, right? It's a massive site. We just don't have sites like that that are assembled and ready to go in this region. That continues to be a challenge for us. The port strategy is phenomenal on trying to get us to that point. We need to look at sites across all different size and scope. So whether it's a vertical manufacturing site that can fit on, you know, three, four acres, or it's a 500-acre site that we might be able to be ready, that is, in my opinion, what holds us back from some of the competitive nature.
And that was actually my last question. And so is there, describe to us the, the level of state support. There, there used to be quite a bit of support for brownfield sites to clean them up, have government come in and take that risk and do that for the businesses so that by the time you're showing a site, it has been cleaned, it's been cleared, it's ready to go, it's got the infrastructure necessary, and, and it's much more sellable to a company that wants to come here. So is, is that brownfield money or any other assistance from the state? Is, is that where it used to be? Is it getting, where are we getting back to where we started, or is it still less than?
I would believe that the majority of, people would agree that the brownfield development piece is still less than where it used to be. A lot of the focus has been on quick wins, which brownfields don't tend to be quick wins. As you'll recall, in the last budget, Governor Dewine released the All Ohio Future Fund, which was about $750 million towards site development. There has not been, a majority of those funds have not yet been deployed as we're looking across the state for those types of. So there is topic, does that go more towards brownfield? Are the, are the requirements really strict on that? Part of the challenge is to leverage those funds. It's a pretty big risk on the community in terms of payback if you're not able to produce job-creating projects within a small amount of time. So it's, you know, it's a complicated conversation. It is definitely where entities like the port have become critical because they can absorb some of that risk that's not necessarily government risk, but you're never going to have a private developer coming to be able to do that as well.
Right, and, and I just want to say, on behalf of myself, I don't necessarily speak for the board, but anytime you need advocacy related to site development and state dollars to help us, because I, I hear your struggle. It's been the struggle for the last five years is the site development piece. And we used to have a pretty robust partnership with the state. And as we continue to advocate for more dollars, more investment from the state, if you need any advocacy voices, because it impacts all of us, please do let us know. Mr. Summer Odumas.
Thank you, thank you for your great presentation. Just a couple of comments on your executive team, oh, it's a powerful executive team. Just wondering, how long the terms are, and are there any vacancies right now? Are you aware of?
They are two-year terms. They are set through our bylaws, based on investment level and participation level. And there will be, we will start to have a governance committee conversation and vote on some additional, additional positions in November. I will expect that we'll have two or three that will turn over.
Very good, because I just, someone just popped in my head, I think that would be great for your team. But I'm sure you'll vet everybody. But the other thing, just clarify for me, you said Jobs Ohio acquired the liquor franchise, and I was trying to figure that out. I know the liquor industry gets extremely high revenue from their taxes. But I was thinking, so is Jobs Ohio the first stop for getting someone to fill those openings for jobs? What does that mean, that they acquired the franchise?
So Jobs Ohio actually purchased the rights to distribute liquor in Ohio, spiritus liquor in Ohio, from the state, and then were able to take that out to the bond market. And then that extension was granted for the next 15 years. So Jobs Ohio has a, a division, it's called also Jobs, it's the Jobs Ohio Beverage Service, and they actually run the spiritus liquor sales for the state of Ohio.
Wow, that's great. Okay, all right, thank you. I'm glad I asked.
I, I have the kitsch joke that says the more y'all drink, the more money I have to do my job, as long as it's responsible and it's spiritus liquor.
Right. Okay, thank you, that's all I have.
Thank you.
Commissioner Reese.
Yeah, thanks. Thank you for the presentation. And obviously, it has nothing to do with, with you all buying those rights, but being commissioner, Dree House are looking at each other like, no, that was not a good idea for the liquor rights. We fought against that because those, those are dollars that could have been controlled by the state and fund a lot of different things. Liquor sales, when, when times are bad, when times are hard like this, what we saw, a fact that liquor commission folks, I chaired, I was the ranking member on the committee where they had to come, and I learned that when times are bad, when times are hard, unfortunately, liquor sales go up. Everybody wants, you know, I don't drink at all, but people want to get a drink. And so that's a lot of money, that was a moneymaker for, for the, for the state, but we lost that fight. And we understand that Jobs Ohio privatized us, so now they have those dollars that you can buy. Sticking to that point, we also found on the liquor sales, I did a lot of research on liquor, don't drink at all, that's crazy. But I did a lot of research because it was in our committee, and the amount of dollars, because then you would, like, anything sold in this area, per se, you would have the rights and those funds would come and help us fund to put in development, to reinvest. But with that, and I know there's a lot of talk about, you know, trying to scrap away with inclusion and diversity and all those things. But I like to switch the conversation to taxation without participation. And when you look at liquor sales, or you look at sales tax, and you look at, when you break it down with who's buying the liquor and who's controlling the liquor, and then where the liquor dollars are going, you see a lot coming from diverse people. And the, and we're, so we're talking liquor sales that's coming from diverse people, no matter what color you are, there's diverse people drinking. Women are drinking, men are drinking, African-Americans are drinking. It's a diverse group. And I want to make sure that those dollars, if they're drinking the liquor and it's highly advertised, particularly in minority communities, they're drinking the liquor, that at least those dollars can be reinvested into, they should be able to participate. So I'm happy to know that you said that executive committee, that's just one component. As you said, it, it changes, it evolves. Because when I look at it, I, first of all, I'm very excited of you leading this as a woman, a CEO. But we still look at this board. But we still look at this board of 26 people, only four of them are women and only two African American, and we're talking about liquor sales. And if we just matched the percentage of the liquor based on who's buying, then this board would look a little even more diverse. So I'm happy to know that you're continuously evolving and working on that. My next component is that I know that we are a partner, and you've named the different partners. And we put up about $250,000 each year as a partnership because we believe that we have to reinvest and continue to bring companies here. But my question is now that the climate has changed, the leadership politically has changed. And it's not just changing of the guard. We're talking about a complete unprecedented type of, if you will, I would say, a restructuring of America, if you will. With that being said, with tariffs and those kinds of things, and you're going with your new approach where we go into these other countries and trying to work with them, is that going to be still popular to do? Is that going to be the way to do it? Because we've got these battles going with tariffs right now. And everybody's fighting each other. So I don't know would they be friendly to a ready Cincinnati to say, come to, not just Cincinnati, but bring the stuff here because there is a push, a pushback, if you will. So have you considered that maybe in, I know you do your plan in advance, but is there flexibility there? Because I don't know if going to Japan and these places would be the model anymore under the new, the new way that's going on.
Absolutely flexibility in what our plans are. I will tell you that in any political environment, whether it is uncertain, challenging or great, we go as an emissary for the region, right? So we know that some of these companies are going to have to have manufacturing operations in the US regardless. And it's our job to sell them on the open, welcoming nature of the Cincinnati region. And we don't, we do not engage in federal political discussion because it's outside of our control when we're there. So we're selling the benefits of what's here, layering on the fact that we've got two foreign trade zones. So at least from a tariff perspective, we have some mechanism that might be able to be beneficial from international companies who are making investments. But it is definitely something that is fluid. And if, I would never use our investor dollars on a trip that I didn't think would be fruitful. So we reevaluate before we make any of those plans.
Okay, yeah, I just wanted to, I'm not being political. I'm being business, you know, whoever gets in, they drive where we're going. And I'm just saying where they're going. If there's tariffs and those kinds of things, I'm not saying, don't go to these places. I'm asking, do we have flexibility? Because we're going to have to. It's never, what we're experiencing has never been experienced before. So I wanted to make sure that we're not flat footed in terms of that. We're able to still, if we have to shift, you're able to shift and do whatever we need to do to still try to sell, sell us. That's great. The other thing I wanted to put up though, in this changing economy, and I know we talk about Intel, everybody, oh, we lost Intel, we lost Intel. Well, what I'm seeing in the paper, some of these big things, I don't know to go big is the, I don't know if that's the new, if that's the way we should be going. Because what I've been seeing in the articles, and maybe I'm wrong, but the Tribune Chronicle said Intel isn't living up to its initial promises. It also goes on to say they're facing financial troubles. We've seen some similar things with GE moving from downtown, you know, leaving downtown. So the question is, what are you seeing in your research? Because a lot of times we get these big, it takes us a long time, hard work that you put in and others to get these big companies. But I don't know what big is it right now because these companies are losing on the stock market. They're cutting jobs. They're trying to get adjusted to whatever the new thing is. And it's always a big announcement. And then a year or two later, they cutting jobs. They got to let people go. What they promised at Intel ain't really happening right now. And it's a lot of uncertainty. So how do we adjust to those kinds of things? Because it takes forever, like you said, to get something like this.
I think for us, our strength has always been the diversity of our economy, right? So if we are, we're not all in on one particular industry segment or sector. We think about one of our largest wins in recent history was the expansion of MedPace, right? And so that's a company that started here, has grown here, is in Hamilton County. Conversations on an expansion for a company that's here are much quicker and usually much more fruitful than on a recruitment because they have a proven growth strategy that's worked. So when I look at some of our large wins, again, TQL expansion, MedPace expansion, Deech Pretzel, who's expanded three times now, also in Hamilton County, like those are the projects that we feel really confident are going to be able to meet their metrics. I think where we are really blessed in the region again is the diversity of our industry, but also size, right? So we don't have those really large sites, which is also a little bit of less risk. So we're attracting some of those smaller suppliers. We're looking at expansion of existing. And then we're looking at a couple of sites that might be able to fit that new. But we're not going all in on one particular strategy.
That's good, that's good to know, as people are listening. The small business piece that you have, the grant program, which I think is fantastic. I know you mentioned Alloy a couple of times, working with them. And we now have an office of small business. Now we have our Small Business Day. And I just want to make sure that they have reached out to Ready to be a part of that. We're going to be at the Centaia on May the 12th. Because again, people are looking for what's available. They may or may not know. And then also the fact that you talked about you're able to. Maybe you can't get the grant, but we could connect you to some different things that may be able to also help you. So I really like that program that you have and the fact that small businesses right now are hanging on by a thread. And we, I just believe the small business, there are different levels of small business, obviously, inside and so forth. But we have to really hang on to the small business and expand them because, you know, we're going to be a growing county. So I'm excited, I'm excited about that. Going to the part about not having the land. And I know Commissioner President mentioned about the land. And we have been, obviously with the state, putting more money. We want them to do more money, but they didn't. And we put about $2 million in addition. So we do $250,000 with you all, then we do $250,000 with the port. That's for operations. But then we have a $2 million fund to fund site readiness. And for me, I'm kind of like, we got to have the land. But then I'm also like, okay, we get in land and we're sitting on sometimes land because it takes time with that. But you've indicated we still don't have enough sites to sell.
We can always use more sites, right? We have, we are one of the more constrained regions in Ohio in terms of our ability to grow sites, with good and bad, right? We're a very populous region. That's great. We don't have the big swaths of more rural land that is slated for development. I would again call your attention to the Givodon Project, right? That was something that really did not sit that long in terms of an economic development project, in terms of the acquisition by the port, the ability to clean up and to get that site moved. So the port has a phenomenal history of doing that and a great partnership. I would also say that oftentimes we're bringing state of Ohio or Jobs Ohio dollars to the port on these specific projects. So we are able to leverage the investment that you're making and bring in additional dollars to help offset some of those costs. So it's been a great partnership model. I don't think anyone does it any better in the state anywhere than the port.
Thank you, I appreciate it. Lastly, this is for Mr. Aludo and my colleagues, just to know. Because, you know, I do support the site readiness. I do think we just have to move a little cautiously with the climate that we're in now and limited resources. But I'm glad to hear that Ready, you're able to take some of the smaller sites, get existing businesses, expand them. I don't think that story is told enough about expansion of the existing businesses that are here. That creates more jobs and you can get them out the door, get it moving quicker. There's already a commitment here. And I'd love to hear a lot more of that also promoted. As it relates to the land, there's a balancing act for me. I did meet with the port yesterday, Mr. Aludo, and to my colleagues. And I did stress this, and I want to make sure this is clear. We have to be very careful. There's a project called the Blue Tide. It's the Drake Hotel, the Carousel, that's been torn down. But there's a building that's there that was going to auction and the port bought it. And my understanding is that in that building are beauty and barber shop people. I don't know them, but they're in there. And they basically took some scraps and made a business out of it. And my understanding that the port wants to tear it down and use it for site readiness, but where would these people go? And can they really afford the rent? They're on month to month trying to make it. So we have to just be careful. And I've indicated to them that I would not be supporting throwing out beauty and barber shop people who are trying to make it in this very tough time. So a lot of times we come in and say, oh, it's raggedy, it's unsafe. Well, it's been raggedy, it's been unsafe. And they took it and made something out of it and trying to survive. And now we're going to come back and say we tear it down and look for a big business and hope they show up. But now we've thrown out these taxpaying beauty and barber shop. And that was another industry that reported to my committee, the beauty and barber shop industry. And I've been an advocate for them for many years. So I just want to put that out as I know that shouldn't be our intention, but we've got to be careful in not just throwing out these folks who've taken scraps and tried to make a business, tried to survive. And now all of a sudden we show up and say, well, you know, it's not safe. It don't look good. Well, it's probably been not safe. And I promote safety, but I also don't think we should use safety to throw people out. So can you look into that? And I'll get back to us, it's the Blue Tide thing. And they came to me and said, hey, can you help us? Because some black businesses will be thrown out. And the answer to me was no, I cannot help you throw out black businesses or any businesses that are small and trying to survive. So I wanted to say that because we were talking about the $2 million that we give to tear down and buy these properties. We just wanted to have some balance and sensitivity, especially now when people are just really struggling. So I want to thank you, Ready, Kim, and all that you do. And thank you specifically also for the small business piece. And I don't think we talk enough about that. So we'd love to help, continue to help amplify that and work together with you on it. Thank you, thank you.
Thank you. I just want to follow up on one of the conversations about the state funding. So it used to be with the Clean Ohio Funds that that funding went to greenfields and went to brownfields in pretty much equal measure. That is, that changed. And the greenfields were prioritized, those are in the rural areas. Brownfields were not prioritized, those are in the urban areas. And so we suffered from that. And beyond that, it wasn't even a matter of just dollars, but rather policy related to what we, what we had going on on these sites. So it used to be that we had to have an end user. We needed to know the number of jobs. We needed to have, in order to even invest that money. As opposed to what we're talking about here, which is a longer term investment where you go and you clean up. You don't know who the end user is going to be because they haven't come yet, right? But you're getting people coming to you all the time looking for four acres, five acres, six acres, whatever it is. And if we're not ready, then we lose. We lose that company. And so has there, I feel like I heard someone not so long ago say that the state has recognized this dynamic. They provided more flexibility now related to the brownfield money. Is that true?
I don't know that I have the exact information for that, but I can follow up with you.
Okay, because so it's not only money, it's also the policy that is related to those dollars and how it is structured in a way to once again put us at a disadvantage when you don't have the end user because they, you know, haven't asked yet. And it's going to take two years to clean up a site. Guess what? Companies don't wait two years for a site. I mean, you know, we've got to have them ready. And so I just want to point that out because that was one of the struggles when we talked about Jobs Ohio, Clean Ohio. You know, there have been a lot of policy changes at state level that really have not benefited Hamilton County. And so once again, happy to advocate. We have a little bit of history here related to some of those moves by the state. So, but thank you again for coming in. Thanks to Andrea for being here as well. Really appreciate the update. We are, as you say, a primary investor in Ready. And it's good to know that the work continues. And it's clear to me that it's strategic. You are trying to make sure that we leverage in a way that, you know, meets our advantages and doesn't worry about where we're not playing, right? We don't need to play everywhere. We need to play where we're at our best. So I really appreciate you illuminating that strategy, so.
I want to make sure I put that number out there. Going piggyback what you said about the state. According to the records here, the Dayton Daily News said in 2022, the liquor sales was at $1.73 billion. So I just wanted to make sure that, and it's continued to go up. But I just wanted to say this is a big.
Oh, it's a big enterprise, that's right. Well, and our, part of our challenge back then was there was not a lot of transparency related to that. And previous to Jobs Ohio, that money ran through government. And so it was easy to find, you know, it was easy to access. That changed. And that was where we really ran into some trouble in the legislature. It was like, wait a minute, that this is, these are public dollars. And then it repositioned. So anyway, I don't want to dig up a bunch of old history, but it's a significant enterprise. Our citizens are paying into the enterprise. And we're glad that you're at the helm directing that funding when it comes to our region. So more, more power to you, is what I want to say.
Thank you for your investment and partnership. Appreciate it, thank you.
Appreciate that. All right, we are going to shift to the small event grants presentation. I believe Kelly Adamson is coming up. I know that Ann Centurley's in the room and so is Holly. So we've got the team here. So thank you for being here. We're anxious to hear your presentation.
Thank you, Commissioner Dree House, and good morning, commissioners. So I'm here today to present the recommendations for the 2025 Community-Based Event Grants. As a brief background, the board authorized $250,000 in the 2025 General Fund Budget for the Community-Based Event Grant Program, which is in the third year of the program. The goal of this program is to promote economic development and also their small business districts and communities through the support of these events. Grants are capped at $25,000 and are awarded to cities, townships, and villages. And so here's just a visual snapshot of all the communities which were awarded the Community-Based Event Grant from 2023 through the recommended 2025 year. And just to share, in the 2025 round, we received 21 applications with the total funding requested just over $390,000. And then 16 of the 21 applications were eligible. Out of 16 applications, each recommended applicant demonstrated that their event would be, you know, both within close proximity to the business district, supporting those small businesses, and then also creating a strong economic impact, engaging and promoting the local businesses that are a part of their community. And so with that, I'm going to run through just very briefly all the applications which are recommended to the board for funding. And please note, we're happy to send these dates of the event to the board. And I'll say definitely get ready to book up your calendars with a lot of fun local events and shop local as we have some fantastic events on deck this year. So to kick it off, we have the City of Blue Ash with their Friday Night Concert Series. These concerts bring music back to the newly renovated town square in the heart of their business district. And then we have Village of Woodlawn with their Juneteenth Fireworks Festival. The event includes a 5K run, an outdoor movie night, basketball tournaments, Juneteenth museum, and local vendors. And then we have the Village of Cleaves, and they have their Christmas Walk. And the Christmas Walk is an annual street festival where there's a small business passport, local vendors, and carriage rides. And we have the City of Madeira with Light Up Madeira. And this event partners with the Madeira Chamber of Commerce to celebrate the beginning of the holiday season and of course encourage shopping local. And we have the Village of Newtown and Newtown Summer Fest in 2025. And this street fair includes a 5K, live entertainment, and participation from Newtown's restaurants and small businesses. And then we have the Village of Addison, which is Music in the Park. And the Music in the Park event will have a range of activities and attractions incorporating local businesses to showcase their talent and wares. And then we also have the City of Wyoming with their Wyoming and Food and Music Festival. This inaugural event will include a variety of regional food trucks, independent vendors, performance artists, and Wyoming businesses. We have the Norwood with the Norwood Art Show. And the juried local show includes musicians, food trucks, vendors, all taking place within Norwood's business district. And we have the City of Loveland and the Loveland Food Truck Rally. This brings attention to the Loveland Madeira Corridor and includes entertainment and sidewalk sales and a community business area that they're highlighting. And we have the City of Forest Park with Jazz in the Park. Forest Park's oldest event going on for over 30 years, drawing people from across Hamilton County to enjoy live jazz, food, and vendors. We have the City of Mount Healthy with Christmas in Mount Healthy. This is an event incorporating holiday-themed activities within participating small businesses in the Mount Healthy Business District. We have Village of Silverton with Taste of Silverton. And this is a longtime street party that's held in Silverton's Plainfield Business District where local businesses and vendors showcase their products. And then finally, we have the City of Springdale with Springdale Pretzel Fest. This is an inaugural event showcasing Hamilton County's rich culinary scene, community spirit, and they also boost local businesses. And this does have a special focus on highlighting their economic growth in the food industry. And, you know, Kim was just speaking to this because their inaugural Pretzel Fest celebrates Springdale's growing reputation as a hub for pretzel production. And as you saw through Ready's presentation, Deutsche USA's $70 million investment in a new facility that just opened in October of last year. So this event is kind of incorporating that piece as well, which is neat. And then we have two applicants that were not recommended for funding. We have Village of Golf Manor whose application requested funding for three separate and unrelated events. The eligibility does state that applicants must be a single event scheduled for one or multiple days. And additionally, the application did not clearly demonstrate the economic impact of the events. Colrain Township's application for Diamond Dogs for Oktoberfest did not meet the criteria as the event did not incur within a close proximity to a business district. And now here's a snapshot, a map reflecting the recommendations for 2025 and the communities that these events will take place in. As you can see, it's a pretty diverse and wide impact across the county. And so for next steps, if there are no questions or concerns, a resolution will come before the board on April 3rd, authorizing the county administrator to negotiate and enter into grant agreements. Thank you.
Thank you. I have a couple of questions. So thank you for highlighting this idea that the whole point of this grant, and Commissioner Summer Dumis was the champion of this grant when it was originated, similar to the large event grant, has to have an economic development impact in these communities. The idea is meant to have them either expand on what they've been doing, do more marketing to increase the economic development impact to the small businesses near the event. And so there is this nexus that we have to meet. And I understand that a couple of folks did not meet it, but I'm glad you highlighted that. I have been to a couple of these events in the different communities. And one of them, I think it was in Silverton, told me that the only way they were able to expand their footprint was because of this grant. And so it is clearly having that economic development impact that was intended. So thank you for that. Two smaller things. So the amount that was allocated was the 250. I had my staff do this math. Do you mean to tell me that these grants are funded in full regarding, you know, what they asked for and what we were able to fund? And the amount was dead on the 250 without the two that didn't qualify? I mean, it strikes me. It's really something. If that's the case though, isn't it? I mean, it's amazing. Do you know what I'm saying? I mean, the math equation is like, oh, they asked for exactly $250,000 with the two that were disqualified not getting anything.
And a lot of the grants, a lot of the applicants, they understand that, you know, a lot of the funds that they're looking at, they understand their numbers well. They understand what the budget is. And we will, you know, if for some reason they do not utilize all of their funds, we, you know, they report back to us and let us know. And so they're reimbursed for the amount of funds that they actually use.
It just struck me. It's really something. And then lastly, when you had your map up, as you look at the funding that has been allocated over the years, not only this cycle but previous cycles, it is striking that the West Side is underrepresented on this map, significantly underrepresented. But it's not only that, it's that so many of them are townships. And I wonder if it's especially hard for townships to qualify for this funding because they often don't have one business district. Unlike a village or a small city, they've got, you know where the business district is. It's on one street. It runs down the middle of the village, and that's where, you know, the events are. In townships, and you just said it about Colrain, the event was six miles away from what they would have considered to be a business district, and so it didn't qualify. So I do wonder, I understand the criteria and I think it's right. But I wonder if there is any way to just take into account some of the challenges for townships because they're geographically so much larger. Or maybe, maybe they're not applying en masse, and I think that's probably the case as well. But maybe just trying to think through whether or not we can reach out to these different townships that are clearly not benefiting from this investment. They haven't ever gotten this money. And say, hey, what's the holdup? Do you not want to apply? That's fine. But if you were to think through this, how could you take advantage of this? Just to make sure that it's a little bit more even as we look at the distribution because it is very east side centric as we stand here today. So I just offer that as an idea. I don't know that they would be interested, but it is a striking map when you take a look at it through the years. Commissioner Summer Dumis.
Thank you. Thank you for your presentation. I just love everything about your presentation. I did send you an email about it, every question that I had as it relates to how much money each entity received and why they did not receive it. It was very clear to me. Also, the diversity of the demographics and the diversity of the events was just great. The rationale that you talked about about why they did not qualify, I think is a great rationale. And so I hope and pray that next year we will be able to do this again. We don't know about our funding, but I never thought it would grow to this. And I can just picture all these people that are out there in every village and township having fun and spreading some love. We know that we need that about right now. So I appreciate what you've done and your team has done to make this come through and that the board is able to continue to fund this right now. So thank you so much.
Commissioner Reese?
Yes, thank you very much. And as was stated earlier, Commissioner Dumis, I want to thank her for bringing it forward. And when it was brought forward, I was happy to support it, no debate. It was the right thing to do, and it got unanimous support. One of the things that I do want to point out, I do have some concern about. Let me, before I do that, I have made a lot of the events and a lot of the, like you said, seeing the people throughout the county come out, seeing a lot of the small businesses that benefited at a time when they needed to benefit. People were buying wares, buying different things from the small businesses. And it was very helpful. And I think it plays to also the fact that we have a facade program where we're trying to help business districts. So it just really plays right into, I think, into what we're trying to do in terms of making sure that all of the municipalities have an opportunity to have economic development and through these small events. They may be small event grants, but the events aren't small. They've got lots of people there. And so just want to, it was without hesitation that I've supported this and continue to support it. With that being said, I will say that I do have some questions. I know Commissioner President Dreehouse indicated the Colrain Township won. And I don't know if this was before the dogs and the dog wardens was out there, but they've got some dog issues. It wasn't just that. So I certainly hope that the dog warden would be available for the event because they've got some issues with some dogs, fortunately, running wild in Colrain Township. But with, we're not participating in that one. But the one I have concerns about is the Village of Golf Manor. I know they named a couple of different things, Juneteenth, Fourth of July Parade, and Labor Day Concert. They asked for about $19,000. I have been to a lot of events in Golf Manor. And their business district and the park where they have the event is right next to each other. They also have lots of small businesses that set up, you know, their tables and tents. And because I shopped at a lot of them during Juneteenth and also their Labor Day concert. And so I just wanted to, I really wanted to see if they could have been included because they've got the business district. You've got the municipality on one side. You've got the park on the other side, and the business district is right there. And then they have all of their things that they've had. They have all these small businesses with booths from the, you know, from the community. So I just wanted to understand that a little better. I know the mayor and the council there has been working very hard in Golf Manor, and I certainly would like to support them.
Okay. No, thank you for expressing that concern. The Village of Golf Manor, you know, the eligibility was that they had applied for three separate events, which was not a part of the eligibility. And in their application, they did not share any kind of economic impact that those events would bring. So it was hard for us to understand the significance of their economic impact there. But if the board does decide at Board Direction, we could, you know, go back and look at incorporating them into, awarding them a grant at the Board Direction.
The reason I was asking that is going back to Commissioner President Dreehouse in terms of was it a lack of understanding? Because the mayor is pretty sharp in Golf Manor. Is it a lack of, you know, was this their first time applying? I mean, because I could not imagine them not having the economic impact. That is, these three events, even just one of them, that is the major thing. And I mean, I was there, and they have, you know, 30 or 40 small businesses that are set up. And then where they are situated, right? Their business district is right on the street. The parade goes by there. But the concert is in the field of their park. The municipality is across the street. And right on the corner is the gas station in the business district. And so I just was concerned. I don't know their application or anything, but I'm just, I don't know if they fill it out and not understand it. I don't know. But I just feel like I know that the mayor is pretty sharp, the council. And, you know, I just would like to, now if they just, you know, really don't have it, that's different. But I just think it might have been, I couldn't imagine them not having economic impact when that's their biggest small business. These events are their biggest events for the small businesses in their community. So anyway, that was kind of my, that was shocking to me. And for me, I would like to see Golf Manor get clarification, if that's possible. But I would hate for them to be left out because of misunderstanding of, you know, what they had to, you know, turn in. I don't know. So that's where I'm coming from. I might be in a minority, but I'd like to support Golf Manor because I've seen it and I've seen the small businesses out there. They're struggling with their business district. And it has a large crowd. This is what brings the crowd to their, to their community. And then let the small businesses make, you know, be able to sell their wares and sell their products. Right next to it is the business that does all of the circus. It's a circus company. And they do a lot of, people hire them for major events all throughout Hamilton County. And their headquarters is right, right there where this event is taking place. So I just can't imagine that they're not in a business district.
I think their application, and they listed three separate events. And then with each of those events, they did not specify any kind of, you know, specific location or community impact, or economic impact. So it was hard for us to have that understanding of what you're, exactly what you're talking about, which sounds like they do have a fantastic economic impact, but it just wasn't submitted into the application. So I would be happy, you know, we want to set them up to succeed. So like all of these grant applications that I present on throughout the year, we try to really work with communities. And I would be happy to do so specifically with Golf Manor to go back to them and say, in the future, here's how you can create a really strong application. And for this year, again, at Board Direction, can take a second look. But in the future, we'll certainly go back to them and happy to review with them in detail about their application and where there was a miss. Because those applications are where we get that information about that economic impact. And we just did not have that for this round, that kind of detail that you spoke about.
Gotcha. Yeah, I just, I know we've had others before years have passed, things come up because we make the final decision and we have worked it out. I don't know if my colleagues are interested in helping with this with Golf Manor. I would be. But I just know that just by going to all these events, I know where they're located, most of them. This one, out of all of them, I don't see them far away from, this is in their business district. If you just ride over there, you can, you know, not that you can, but just ride over there and see it. So and I think the mayor in Golf Manor works really hard along with that council. And so that just was shocking to me. So that's my point.
Commissioner Dumis?
Yeah, I was wondering as it relates to the advertising and marketing. Obviously, you're doing a great job because the mayor of Silverton knew all about it and who had provided it. But as I said earlier, the fact that we may not be able to provide it next year kind of pump up our advertisement and marketing so people that are attending really realize that Hamilton County is providing this. So I'm sure you will. So thank you so much. Other than that, I'll trust the process that you guys use to evaluate the ones that were selected.
Thank you. And I do want to note, related to Golf Manor, that they evidently have not gotten any grants in the past. They're not showing up on the map as having received anything. So I don't know, I don't remember having this conversation about Golf Manor last time about a deficient application. So I don't know if this is their first time applying or not. But what I was suggesting related to the townships might apply to Golf Manor as well. It's just going back to these communities and saying, hey, in that case, this was deficient. We need the locations. We need the economic impact. Or you cannot expect to win a grant because we didn't have the information we needed. And in the case of the townships, it's more of a, hey, is there something holding you back from applying? If it's that you know you won't qualify, that's fine. But if it's something different, I would be interested in knowing that. So the challenge with revisiting, and we do this every now and again, as you say, particularly with CDVG and Home and different funding we get. And we sort through the funding for the organizations that were eligible. They just, we just ran out of money. In this case, it seems a little different because the application wasn't sufficient to award funding. And I do, I'm a little concerned as to where it would come from, were we to fund any of these events. So but I do think there's a great deal of advantage to going back to them and saying, you can't apply for three, apply for one. Give us the details. Tell us where it is, the economic impact, and hopefully we can fund you in the future. So I agree that I want Golf Manor to, you know, access some of these funds. It feels like they haven't relied on them in the past, but it would be nice to be able to provide some funding in the future.
I appreciate that. And of course, I'm outnumbered, but I stand with, I think Golf Manor should go in this year. And one of the reasons is, we just said, we might not have it next year. And so they might be, you know, their businesses might be crushed this year, waiting on next year. I think the, I just, you know, Silverton obviously has done a good job. They have a city manager with experience that's done a lot of work with our county, and they do a great job. And the mayor is outstanding, but he's been there many years and he understands how to work with Hamilton County. Golf Manor, I haven't seen a whole lot we've done with Golf Manor, but the mayor and there's a new council, and they want to be aggressive in saving their business district at a time when it's going to be extremely rough. So I just wanted to, you know, for me, if there was any way, I would like to, I'd like to see Golf Manor in it. Obviously, I'm outnumbered. But again, I want to say I stand with Golf Manor in this because I know where their business district is. And I think some of us probably should, we have a small business and we're a division and we need to kind of understand the proximities as well. And I haven't seen the application. I don't know if the application specifies that it has to be next to the business district. I don't know what that is, and you may have that. But the fact that we might not have it next year. So if you go back and you teach them how to do it and all that, and then next year we don't have it. That's the scary part. And right now, all of us, this board, we've been very active in trying to, we got to go now because we don't know what tomorrow is. We got a crazy, a crazy situation happening, coming down from Washington. We don't know what we're going to do. So that's the reason I wanted to. So that's the reason I wanted to, you know, I just wanted to try to make the case for, having, you know, you know, again, I've been there. I know exactly where it's at. I know exactly their business district right there. And I just think it's a missed opportunity for them to help save their business district and some of their small businesses. So anyway, that's what I wanted to, to put out there. And I know I'm in the minority on this one, but I just wanted it at least be noted and know that their case has been presented. Thank you.
I too have been to Golf Manor.
I have also. So, I mean, I don't.
But you know their business district. Y'all know it's right there.
But the implication that we are not standing with Golf Manor is a little misplaced. So, so they've not.
Yeah, just in the grant is what I'm saying. We all stand with it, but I believe they should be included.
I heard what you said.
And that's what I'm saying.
And they've not relied on this in the past, and I do think that, for me, that makes a difference. They did not present an application that was sufficient. That's problematic. We got to take the money from somewhere else if somebody's a loser in this if we give it to Golf Manor. So there are a lot of things at play here, but I think we all support Golf Manor. It's one of our 49 jurisdictions, so I don't want that, the implication to be that we don't support Golf Manor. It's just simply that in this round, they didn't give us what we needed. And hopefully next round, you can talk to them and coach them up and they can get it in the future. So thank you for the presentation. I appreciate that. All right, commissioners, that's all we have on our agenda. I'm going to make a motion to adjourn.
Second.
Commissioner Dreehouse.
Yes.
Commissioner Summer Dumis.
Yes.
Commissioner Reese.
Yes.